Yeah, hold on a second.
Okay, May 10th, 7:05. It is the Arundel Placing Board. Let me call the meeting to order and start with a roll call. Mr. Kane.
I'm Kane. Tom McGinn.
Roger Moore.
Chip Bassett.
Jens Bergen.
Ted Redway.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion so we can talk about it, please?
No, I don't see anything that's unusual. I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as written.
Zager.
Any discussion? I would like to talk about private ways, streets and roads, but I think we can cover that under other business if that's acceptable to the group.
Which is for an update? Okay, well, I'm all right with that.
Okay. As long as that's okay with everybody else, then any other comments on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I suggest, if this isn't too much minutia, the minutes that we have prepared for approval are May 3rd and April 12th. The April 26th is on the...
That's not minutia. Mr. Moore, would you amend your...
I amend my motion to change the...
To April 12th and May 3rd.
Yep.
Any discussion about that change?
I'm gonna second that as well.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes of April 12th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For approving the agenda.
I'm sorry, approve the agenda. Apologize, apologize. All those in favor of approving the agenda, including April minutes for April 12th and May 3rd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we get to item two, approval of minutes. I apologize. Let's take them in chronological order, if that's okay. Starting with April 12th. Let's start with a motion and then have discussion if that's acceptable.
I'll move that we approve April 12th as written.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
The only thing is, is for on the second page, we did have the treaty of paving. We did, I don't know if Chindian clearly did say that. We did have the motion on what to do about the 35-foot setback. The motion failed that I made, but there's no follow-through on this that says what we came up with. I believe, what I recollect is, is we asked him to come up with a plan for us.
That's my recollection also. And these minutes seem, it struck me as odd, it's just the motion fails and there's no further mention of the issue.
Yeah, well, and it was pretty involved discussion on that. I think that was the one stickler.
That was for the career setback.
Do you have your notes in that evening?
Just in case someone looks at this five years from now.
Yeah.
I have a question.
We had a motion that was withdrawn, and that was to require the applicant to pull usage out of the 35-foot setback and to seed, to stabilize the soil. That was withdrawn. And then the next one was similar. Says remove parking area out of 35-foot setback and to stabilize the soil and with loan and seed afterwards leave the area undisturbed. That was the failed motion. And then Rich said that to follow the ordinance, the barrier should be eight feet at date of installation. And then Mr. Bassett, you had said that perhaps the applicant needs a waiver. And then Mr. Redway said it can't be waived. And then...
What, the setback couldn't be waived?
Because it's an ordinance, right? Or however, I'm not sure of the appropriate warrant wording, but...
It's a requirement. It's a setback requirement.
And then discussion moved on to Mr. Gannon, who asked about a fuel tank that was there. And if a containment field was necessary.
Which isn't in here at all. But that was actually gonna be my next question. But I, gentlemen, my recollection is that applicant is responsible, the fuel tank, the applicant was responsible for checking the DEP and confirming, finding out whether or not his assertion that a tank under 500 gallons did not require a containment area. Is that what other people remember?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, as I recall, the applicant said he was going to go check that.
That's what I just said.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you said that. Okay. Because the ordinance requires containment for any permanent above-ground storage tank.
The setback, is it correct that he, we asked him to tell us what he was gonna do?
Hey, my recollection is he pretty much left it with, you got a 35-foot setback and you need to comply with it, but come back and tell us what you're gonna do there.
I think they had to identify where the actual line was to see how far into that setback he might be. His memory is...
That's just, that's my recollection also.
But no actual...
Okay, so, gentlemen, we have two issues. Yeah, there wasn't any motion or anything, but there was further discussion after this motion failed about the setback. And then there's no mention in the minutes about the fuel oil tank. I don't know whether there needs to be or not, but...
Should be there just in case of question.
I think it, I believe it was Mr. Gannon that brought that up.
Yes.
Okay. Can we...
amend it?
Yep, I'm putting notes in right now to insert.
So, amend it to include the issue about the fuel tank?
Fuel tank storage.
Yes, storage.
And just some note that there was further discussion about the setback and the applicant's to come back with...
His game plan.
With it located and how he is going to comply with the ordinance.
Is it?
Is that right?
Yes.
I think that was accurate.
It was left unresolved.
That's why he's coming back.
Yeah.
Right. For our final, for our final clarification.
So, those two changes, did you second it, Roger?
Yeah.
Did it sound right to you?
Yeah, I'm a little bit fuzzy on the fuel tank issue, but I do recall it.
Well, were you on the side wonk?
Yeah.
Okay, well...
I remember discussing it on the side wonk.
Yeah, he, 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 the applicant was clearly under the impression that as long as the tank was under 500 gallons, that it didn't require a containment vessel, containment area, whatever the right term is, under DEP rules. And Ted, are you saying that any tank requires containment?
Any permanent tank.
I'm sorry?
Any permanent tank. There's no place to say tanks. So, I'm not going to it right now.
What section would that be? Just...
That's gonna be section nine.
General page?
It's 9314. And the reference is 9314. I've got a lot of stuff that's no longer valid, no longer necessary in contract regard. I'm gonna get back and number it.
I thought it was under 500 gallons.
Five hundred.
It didn't require.
Six, nine, fourteen, six.
Yeah, nine, fourteen, six. Fuel containment system shall be, shall be installed, surrounding any above-ground fuel storage tanks and oil and water separated shall be installed, prevent runoff from such containment structures. And onsite vehicle and equipment...
What page is it?
156.
So, it doesn't make a distinction between 500 gallons?
No.
Correctional, pre-lease facility thing.
Any above-ground fuel.
Just noticed we have a spelling error that dates all the way back to 2001.
You mentioned wood exposed in that ship.
Extraction.
If that occurs, that's the exact verbatim that we need to...
Yes.
On the date of that meeting, because it was unidentified in the town's ordinance, but he was under the impression it was 500 or less. It murmurs, yeah, so there was no real clarification.
I'm taking another contract figure. I should say my mother, it's in the garage.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. So, I guess maybe we just note that there is an open issue regarding the fuel containment system and whether we're going to follow the legal... Mr. Redway, wouldn't the applicant have to request a waiver if he comes back and says DEP requires, doesn't require it?
Well, that would be, that would be a problem, wouldn't it?
Why?
Well, because there's no waiver provisions for this stuff.
Ted, I have no idea how you figure out what we can waive, what we can't.
Well, I only waive, we only waive things which we are allowed to waive. In the zoning ordinance, distances or setbacks and distances and specific things that say shall, we're not allowed to waive.
Because this is a recurring issue that comes up, I think we should make an effort to go to where the provisions spell out our authority on that and for us all to become really familiar with that.
The source being DEP.
I find it very frustrating.
Yeah, let's nail that down, because that's...
Yeah, using that as a guideline.
It seems random to me.
We as a board are the at least as familiar with that as the planner.
Yeah.
The board wrote that provision.
A board did.
No, this board did.
Well...
This current constituency?
No, there are several, we've had some, several facial changes.
Okay.
But this was, this was past.
When I say this board, the, the, let's see, what's the date of this? This date is 2000?
So, Ted, is your position that we have no ability to waive this?
In zoning ordinances, usually don't have any waiver provisions unless they are specifically specified in the ordinance that you can waive. And or if you run into a situation where may, can, or could is used as a word. When you use the word may, shall, or will, that is a requirement and it cannot be messed with unless there's some other waiver provision somewhere. And there, there are no other waiver provisions.
Is that wordsmithing?
That's, well, actually, the wordsmithing is discussed in the second part of the ordinance, where it talks about language.
Okay, let's not get, I guess, let's not get hung up on this, but my recollection was, confesses to the board was that if the applicant came back and DEP says you don't need it for under 500 gallons, but that's where, that's where I'm using as a guideline.
I would suggest everybody look at session 31 before you come to any of the conclusions, okay?
I'm not trying to draw any conclusions.
Well, just...
We should, you need to have something in the minutes that raises the...
Sorry.
...to tank and whether or not there is, that is left open, whether or not there's a requirement for a containment system. And if that's open, Ted, you need to make absolutely, you need to make absolutely clear to the applicant what, so he doesn't have the wrong expectations, because my understanding of the outcome is different. From this being unwavable.
Is, under the ordinances, we've been using the term waiver. Is that the functional equivalent of the word variance?
No, it would not. Variance is only, can only be granted by the zoning board of appeals and not by the planning board. So, variance, variance is a very specific process and very, very confined and restrained. It's a very narrow interpretation.
Okay, so it doesn't, there isn't a definition of waiver in here?
No. There is in the subdivision ordinance and there is in the street construction ordinance, but there isn't in the, in the zoning ordinance.
I don't, I don't remember seeing in here where the scope of authority for making a waiver is discussed.
It's not. That is the problem.
Well, what can happen is you can put language...
That's my knowledge.
The point is, in situations where the board feels that waivers are important, you certainly can put in components in here to allow, to give the planning board latitude to, to provide such waivers by using words may and should, and could, and all of the other ones that are specifically specified in 31. But wherever you use the word shall, that is mandatory. And that's, that's recognized universally in the land use law world. So, if you want to have provision, then we have provisions like should.
I'm sorry, we're getting in the weeds on discussion or something. Can we talk with, but what do we want to put in these minutes regarding the fuel tank and possible containment? Just a, does Mr. Gannon raise the issue and it's unresolved to do that?
It seems to me we should put in the minutes what the secretary's notes, exactly. Nothing more than that.
Fine. That's good. Yes, you, totally appropriate. Okay. All right, let's move on. Is there anything else that we need to talk about? Either the, I don't think the road crown is particularly difficult. Is the, is the language "technical resources and capacity to construct and or complete projects"? Is that the exact language that we all agreed on?
Yes. It even has a photograph of it.
I was gonna say, I took a picture of that, because...
Okay. I just, very good. I was...
It's labeled with A's. Are you looking?
I was like, I'm not missing that.
Good work. Okay. All right. Seven-day notification period, that was ECPG, public hearing, public hearings.
Just one question. In Equestrian, we're retaining six or 10 animals.
What?
Go to, go to Equestrian.
Which, where, what are you looking at right now?
The last page of the minutes.
Okay.
Question.
On which?
I've got animal, I have a bunch of animal husbandry.
Same, same date, right?
Yeah, it was Equestrian.
And then you guys have to tackle the last item.
It's Equestrian.
Get it backwards.
Okay.
So, go six, five, four.
Should be the last page, not in animal husbandry, but in Equestrian.
I have it.
In Equestrian. It's in, it's in the minutes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're in the minutes.
Last page.
Last page of the minutes. We're discussing Equestrian. We had 10 and then there was motion to make it 6. And did we go back to 10 or is it still 6?
Make what 6?
The number of horses for a riding state.
The number of horses boarded.
Right.
That was... Was there a minute for the motion to read?
We left it at 10.
Oh, I know I wasn't happy about leaving it at 10.
Right, but it was left at 10.
That's where it was, the final decision was left at 10.
Because I didn't see that vote. Do you have notes there, Gregor? Was that an earlier session? That's, it's all bleeding together.
You guys went back and forth on that several times.
Did we ever vote on anything?
I haven't highlighted, because I needed to refer to the video. So, I would have referred to the video and then done my minutes, because...
So, there was no vote?
Yeah.
There was.
So, we voted to keep it at 10.
We voted to keep it at 10.
But it's not reflected here in the minutes.
Yeah.
Because one of the things was, we were not gonna reconsider a vote that had already been taken to rechange it over again. And we left it at 10.
That sounds like we didn't have a vote.
We had a vote first, then we were trying to reconsider it. We left it at 10.
Essentially, I made it in my notes and noted to myself that I needed to refer to the video, so that when I created the minutes, I referred to the video and made my minutes accordingly.
Should we perhaps defer approval of these minutes until we...
We can. I just edited my notes to...
I understand. Gentlemen, what do you, what do you think?
I recall 10.
Yeah, but, you know, I recall 10 as well, but just to make sure, there should be 10 notes.
Wait, if there were some, if there was a motion, whether it was defeated or approved on that subject, then it needs to be in the minutes, correct?
Yes.
I'm not sure if you have...
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I withdraw the motion then.
So, I make a motion, we table the minutes of April 12th. Can we get clarification on the number of equines on the border?
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm sorry, took so, all right. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry to beat that dead horse. I couldn't resist. All right, May 3rd, zoning workshop.
I will make a motion, it all seems right to me, so a motion, we prove this as written.
A question for you. Are we sure that I voted in favor of the $5,000 definition?
No.
Because I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I voted no on that.
The first one failed, and the second one...
Yeah, it went again. There was a second vote.
The first one was $10,000, I believe, was it not?
Mm-hmm.
No, it was $1,000 to start. But I, I am fairly certain that I voted no on that. On the $1,000? No, on the $5,000.
The first time.
Because we didn't say we wanted everybody's tax records.
That, yeah, that, it got more involved. First time...
I actually voted in favor of it the first time.
I thought you had put the number 10,000 out there, Chip, but ultimately agreed with the group that voted for the restated motion of 5,000.
Yeah, everybody, the second time around, everybody was in favor.
Okay. I know I voted no on something, and I don't see any record of...
That issue was brought up on page two here, and it says all in favor.
All right, I understand. I'm just, I know I voted, there was one that I voted no on, and I don't see anywhere in here.
I think we did some straw polls.
We did a lot of straw polls.
Yeah. This was an actual vote. Okay.
Question. Farther down after the 5,000, under discussion, it says manure structure. And didn't Mr. Monroe turn out and say something about it not being covered so it can breathe?
Yes, that's why uncovered is, has been struck. Covered has been struck.
But this is just a list of some factors.
I know, but it just says 100 days worth of manure with gutters kept covered.
So, you're... What, you're saying that it shouldn't be with walls and enclosed?
Well, it depends on, depends on how, if you're under the nutrient management program, they're designing a structure or whatever else that to cover all of this.
Sure, but I think in those situations where we have manure storages in, in facilities that do not have a nutrient management plan...
Yeah, but I'm using it with nutrient management plan. We shouldn't dictate to within the new management program, if they're designing it and installing it, that's where I'm going at.
Well, to begin with, it was strictly a discussion that we asked Mr. Monroe what constituted nutrient management plan, and he gave us a list of factors, and that's all he's explaining here. Whether it's covered or not, either that was his comments.
All right, and then I'm wrong or I'm on. Yeah, I'm just drawing out questions, sir. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion for, for approval of the minutes?
Yes. Because you made a motion.
Right, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Right here, none? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the May 3rd zoning workshop as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I made a statement. I'd like to commend our secretary, Karen, for somehow shaping order out of that rather chaotic.
It was chaotic.
It was extremely chaotic situation.
Glad you said that, Ted.
So, thank you for your...
Here's your... Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, because we can't even remember what we said. 5,000, 1,000, 10,000, we went all over the place.
Yeah, we're all in, man, too.
One of the federal...
The reason for that, Tom. It was a long night.
It was, it was... Okay. So, now we reach the citizen comment period, where every meeting we offer the citizen, either residents or property owners in Arundel...
One at a time, please.
I'm sorry, I feel like I need to go through the ritual.
Yeah, I know.
Offer them an opportunity to address the board with items not covered by the agenda. Seeing no members of the public here, I will open and close the citizen comment period, separated by a nanosecond. Okay. Item four, land use ordinance revisions. Proposed amendments to the land, Arundel land use ordinance. Approval of amendments to the LOU section for animal husbandry. Now, why do I have...
Three revisions?
Why do I have three different things here?
Because we left Ted with the option of writing something up and then we would make a choice on it.
Okay. Did I get this in email?
No. No. This is your seat for the first time. I can give a synopsis if it, Mr. Chairman, if you so wish.
Okay. Why don't you tell us what the difference between... Okay, why don't you tell us what the difference between A, B, and C?
One, two, and three. One, one is, one, two, and three basically deal with whether we're gonna call these units of measurement, whether we're gonna call them animal units as Wayne Monroe of NRCS had urged us to do, which is our current measurement, which is a thou- thousand pound weight of any animal. Or whether we're gonna, we're gonna stick with stock points or stocking points, however you wanna put it. The first version deals with, addresses the issue of animal units. And that is, uh, that is, uh, you'll find on, on the, uh, on the table nine, three, five, one, essentially using his delineation of animal units. You'll find that in there and you'll find a lot of decimal points. Like if you go to page two or four. And I think the concern there was, um, whether that would just confuse the public so much that they just gave up.
Aye, aye.
I think we had this discussion previously when we were talking about. And, uh, Wayne's, Wayne, the, the copy that Wayne gave us standardized all of these various animal units into one number, which was point five animal units, regardless of their chickens or whatever. And that didn't seem to jive with the formulas, so I converted it into, you know, how many pounds per acre, or, you know, how many animal units you're gonna have per chicken. So, um, or per, per, el-.
I, I am. I'm, I'm mystified by these, the different versions of this table.
Excuse me?
I am mystified by the different persons of this table.
The first thing we should have been saying.
The table mystifies me.
Also. Well, if you, we. I think we all agreed that we were going to look at this from a management, if you recall, you adopted, you gave me instructions to make this based on with and without nutrient management plans.
Correct, okay, so, so, okay, and, and what, what Mr. Lowery specifically said was that we would have two columns with a superheading of with nutrient management plan. And then you would have carrying capacity. And I guess stocking points.
Right.
On, on, underneath that, and instead you split it, I, I, I think the table is way too confusing.
Alright, Mr. Chip, Mr. Chip, just quickly looking, okay, if you look under, like it says, page two of, of four, on both of them, they're both written in such a way that equating to stocking points and AU points. They're actually all the same, except with a different abbreviation of SP or AU.
I, I, I understand that, Marty, my, my point is.
Okay.
What Jamie specifically laid out.
Yeah.
Was that we, the first two columns would be with the nutrient management plan.
Yeah.
And then the third and fourth columns would be without the nutrient management plan.
Make a difference, I, I.
Yeah, it does. I, I, from a presentation standpoint, I think it makes a big difference.
Well, the nutrient management plan designation, the reasoning's got it with and without the columns, is because you have stocking points, animal units.
I, I, I understand that, but the, the idea was that it, you, you would have, instead of carrying capacity, the superheading would be with nutrient management plan. And then you would have a carrying capacity column and a stocking points column. And then you would have, without nutrient management plan, you would have carrying capacity and stocking points. And to, to me, I, I thought Jamie's suggestion was much more clear than this.
I, I don't see too much of a difference either way.
Yeah, I mean, either.
Still fault four columns and.
Yeah.
But it's four columns, but, but it, it, the, the, the bottom line is, there are, there are completely different rules. If you have a nutrient management plan, there's one set of rules.
Yeah.
If you don't have a nutrient management plan, there's a separate set of rules.
And it's spelled out right here, and these are four columns.
Yeah, but it's jumbled, you go with, with, you go without with, without with.
No, but you also go carrying capacity with or without, stocking points with or without, so even no matter how you mix it, it's still, it's still trying to combine.
I, I understand it's the same data, I just, I, I.
What I don't understand, gentlemen, is why the carrying capacity is very straightforward, I don't understand why the entries in the animal units column aren't transposed.
Just forget the animal, you can forget animal units, forget the version one. Well, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm being presumptuous, but. It, it, if we just stick with stocking points.
Well, let's, let's make that.
Alright, that's fine, it's the same, it's the same, it's the same point that I'm making there.
Yeah.
Okay, if you've got a with, without nutrient management plan, it seems to me you should be permitted less stocking points, so why isn't that the one? And the with the nutrient plan, the two, cause you permitted two.
It's inverse. You have only, let's say, if you have ten stocking points, okay, if you don't have a minimum, uh, if you don't have a nutrient management plan, that cow will chew up two stocking points.
So.
But if you have a nutrient management.
So you're assigning, uh, uh, two stocking points, that's not a permitted number, that is a consti- that's a constitution number.
That's, that's a value.
Or it's not the right.
That's a value.
It's a value.
It's a value.
Okay, I understand that, okay.
Okay, so each one of these, each one of these.
Equivalency number.
It's an, exactly.
Okay.
Way of putting it, it's an equivalency number. So basically you get double the number of animals with a management plan than you do without a management plan.
Okay, alright.
That's pretty much, it, it's the rule almost all the way through there, you'll see that. I mean, you almost.
Where is the definition of stocking points, where is that derived? I, I see it at the base here at five B, but where is it derived from?
Uh, I made it up.
Well, there, there are two different versions, too, one is ten stocking points and one is. Uh, I.
Absolutely.
To me, as someone who got to play midwife with a cow this afternoon, um, I, I find it really confusing, I, 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 it would be much clearer to me if we had a heading with a nutrient management plan and the rules for that, and then without a nutrient management plan and the rules for that.
Since it doesn't make any difference to me, I, I'll go along with that.
I'll go along with that, too.
I, I, that, that's my recollection of what Jamie suggested, I thought it made sense.
Yeah.
But.
I thought I heard him say that this is what we ended up with here, that.
That's the way.
Was like, that's how I heard it.
Me too.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
But what we're striving for is simply clarity, whether it's for the staff person and they're working with it, or the public. It's, it's clarity and ease of interpretation.
Alright, I, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't, what, what is the the, the carrying capacity number is actually just sort of informational.
Yes.
Number. The stocking point is the, is where the rubber meets the road.
Exactly.
That's what matters, right?
Correct.
And you're right, because if I come in and look at stocking points, what does that mean to me in terms of how many units I can have on it?
Okay. On a nature.
Yeah.
Now.
Could I see?
If we go to page one of the page four of either one, and if you look at number three, you got your stocking points, but also then you have your animal unit. And the definition is more descriptive under your animal unit for one thousand pounds. It doesn't say in the SP one, under number three, what weight for stocking points are we covering.
Cause it's not, there's no weight.
It's not weight, it's just critter.
It's critter. Rather than, see, one of the problems with the weight, you know, the Wayne pushes the weight, I understand why. But the problem is, when it comes down to it, and he said it himself, regardless of the animal, I'm gonna assume a calf is two hundred and fifty pounds.
Correct.
I'm gonna assume that a steer is a thousand pounds.
I mean, the, the bottom line, I, I don't have a scale.
Right.
No, no, I understand.
No, I, I, I don't know how much my bull weighs, he doesn't weigh as much as the one before, probably by three or four hundred pounds, but, you know, but, I mean, the.
But it also, there was a difference between dairy and.
Yeah.
Non-dairy, I mean, uh.
Yeah.
And even. I think the one thing that would be helpful is, we, whether it's animal units or whether it's stocking points, we launch right into what we're talking, what the maximum amount is. To me, it would be helpful if we just have a one single sentence that just gives a definition of what a stocking point is, or an animal unit is, and then starts talking about how many it can have.
Well, I, you know, I, I, I respectfully disagree with the idea that animal units is user-friendly, that the eight or ten large farms that deal with our, our thing is, but that's neighborhood, large farms that already deal with USDA and have the nutrient management plan, and they think in terms of animal units, they ought to be sophisticated enough to figure out how, how this works. The person like my mom that, that animal unit is not, I, I just think it's a.
It's always been an issue with, for years.
That's how we got into the whole issue of it by under animal.
I don't think it's clear here that what the, uh, I, 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 I'm sorry, I take that back completely. It is clear, because table nine point three point five dash two lays out the maximum number of stocking points per acre.
Are you in version three or version two?
I am in version two, three.
Okay.
Can we eliminate at least one of them? That, I, I think, um, it's time to refer to all these, cause we have three different ones that, um, how many, how many think we should keep animal units?
I think we should drop it.
All in favor of dropping it? Yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to, to do the thing.
It's always become a, a running joke.
Yeah.
Animal units.
Make, make the motion that effect.
Okay, I will make a motion that we go with, with the stocking points. So you're making. Rather than animal units.
So you're saying version one should be scrapped out?
That's.
The one that refers to.
The one, right, yeah.
Okay, submit that motion.
So, okay, so, uh, my motion would be to eliminate version one with animal units.
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of going with stocking points, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a, a suggestion to, in, in order to eliminate, uh, one more of these?
Sure.
The only real difference between two and three is that if you notice, go to table nine, three, five, one. And you'll notice the, on the far side on stocking points, stocking points are, are basically, those are equal to animal units, if you will. In other words, you have a lot of, of numbers that are in hundreds. I think there's a thousandth in there.
Yeah, yeah.
You see that?
Yeah.
And the question is, I always thought that would terrify the average citizen, it would be.
I agree.
So I basically took all these numbers and multiplied them by ten, Chip, you remember, you told me to do that a long time ago, and I gave you the version that, that we worked at. And number three is the version where they're multiplied by ten.
Okay, but, but, there, there, there is another uh, under, in version three on the first page.
Mm-hmm.
There's a definition of stocking points.
Right.
Which is missing something at the end.
Oh, I see, you didn't, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll overlook that, give it.
Yeah. Um, I, I, uh, basically.
Actually, there are two definitions of stocking points.
Yes, there's two definitions, and get rid of the stocking points, enable a farmer to calculate, cause I, I said, don't, don't get into it anymore.
Can I talk more?
Yeah, I, I was having a lot of problems, to be honest with you, gentlemen, with, with my word, I have wood two thousand sixteen, and it is an animal, it's very hard, it, it dropped version two, and I had to try to reconstruct it. But I think I've mastered it enough, but. Uh, it, it's a, it's a problem. We can look at the definition, but I guess my, my question is, to get rid of one of these, I would suggest that you decide whether or not you wanna multiply everything by ten or keep it in decimals.
I think that's a good suggestion, I like that.
I like, I agree, it's easier to understand. Whi- which is easier to understand?
Number three.
Stocking point page.
Okay, so do you wanna make the motion?
I will. Okay, so we're making a motion to eliminate version two?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I move that we, uh, limit our discussion to, uh, version three, containing the, um, less decimalized version of stocking points table.
Okay. Awesome.
Do we have a second?
Tom, a second.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, okay. I'm trying to look at which one is.
Well, we, we can take bits and pieces out of version two.
No, no, I'm just asking which one is.
Version three is the one we have been multiplying by ten.
Okay, I didn't see that. So we're doing away with three?
We're keeping two.
Okay, so two goes there.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to go.
All, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Alright, so version two, okay, now let's look at version three, I'm confused, just to read it, there are two definitions of stocking points. What, what the.
This one here is, Ted just mentioned it, say, he was kind of half thought out, and to strike that, this is the more, uh.
Okay.
So the bottom one is great?
The bottom one, yeah.
Okay, so we, so we have a definition of stocking point right at the start.
We do.
That's a good thing.
I like that.
Okay.
We also have a definition of fur bears, cause we don't have anything.
We're scribbling this on.
That's all.
That's all. And about six pence of alpaca.
And Mr. Chip.
Does, does, does this definition.
Fur bearers capture shee.
It excludes sheep. Usually sheep that are shorn are not slaughtered for their fur. Unless they're skinning them, but usually don't waste a good, a good sheep, that's good stuff.
Okay, alright, so, so you're, you're contending, I, I was going to make sure that, you know, that our alpaca population doesn't get affected badly here.
No.
Our alpaca, a lot are about the same.
Yeah.
They're a little different, the, the pack is smaller.
So that's a small. Why, why are, why are, okay, I'm sorry, o- okay, so ta- ta- table, table nine point three point five dash one. Am I the only one that gets confused by this table, the way it's laid out now?
I, I, uh, had difficulty following before, I understand it now, I'm, I'm good with this.
You know, I, I, since you asked that, and I, I'm confused, I, I'm not clear why it's an inverse. That's the irony of it.
It's not a, it's not a permitted number, it's.
Yeah.
It's an equivalency.
It, it, it's one, one cat. It, it, it's one, one cow, if you have a nutrient management plan.
Yeah.
One cow counts as ten stocking points. Okay?
Okay.
So you're allowed ten stocking points per acre.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
So you get one cow per acre. If you don't have a nutrient plan, management plan, one cow counts as twenty stocking points.
Oh.
So you need two acres.
So that's how much you need.
To carry.
About how much you're allowed, okay, all right. Do you think that would be acceptable?
Think of it as points against.
Would you think the, the.
It's false.
Average resident would be able to look at that and, and get it any more than, than me? I think it'll be confusing, Tom, to, to be honest with you, but the only other way to do it is this, is, is to do carrying capacity and just say, well, you're gonna have one per two acres.
That's right.
But, and the problem we, we discovered, and Wayne did not argue with us on that. You know, his argument was, well, nobody does that, nobody mixes, mixes and matches livestock, and we said, but in a bundle, they do.
They do.
And, and he agreed that, yeah, well, you, you know, if we had it so you can have, oh, and so you have one acre and you can have. One cow, one horse, two point five sheep on that one acre, that we have a nutrient problem, we have a serious nutrient problem. So that's why we, that's why we've come up with this, yeah, is it complex?
No matter how we, we define it, it's gonna be difficult.
I think we're gonna have to have examples, we're gonna have to stand up there and say, here's how it works.
Yeah.
And, and just have some, might even have to put it in our handout, this is how it works.
Yeah. That would help, okay.
You know, Chip, I'm looking at your, at your argument about maybe putting. This is what happens.
You're second guessing yourself?
I'm second guessing myself, and maybe putting with nutrient management plan or without nutrient management plan. Maybe you're right. You think that would clarify, Joe? Think it would make it any easier?
I don't think it would make it any more difficult.
Either way.
I mean, to, to, to my mind, it's, it's just, if you, if you need to set, follow one set of rules, I, I wanna be able to put my hand over. The rules that don't apply to me and, and look at the two columns.
Yeah.
So you take the heading of carrying capacity and stocking points off, go with and without nutrient plan, then put carrying capacity.
Yeah, I can live with that, Joe.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion on table nine point three point five dash one? What it is as is, or make a change to it? Just the formatting? Don't all shut up.
No, I'm trying to take them away from the throughout.
Put this in proper phraseology, I think. You're right.
What's that?
It's just spelling of llamas, the spell check changes it.
It should be yamas, right?
It should be two, yeah, oh, here it is, here, it didn't change that one.
Which one?
Uh, table nine, three, five, two. Just, can't change it, I hate this book. There's nothing wrong with word two thousand.
Well, if you, if you explain to me why Apple, every Apple update in my iPhone rearranges my pictures, I'd really appreciate it.
I can explain it, all I can say is that.
I'm sorry, I, I called it, let's, let's, let's stick with this. If, if, if no one else wants to change this table, then I, I, I can't make a motion to the, the chair. Then we just move on.
Well, I'll, I'll throw a motion out there for discussion, I, I don't feel strongly either way. The motion will be to change the headings so that it's with and without. Major headings and then carrying capacity and stocking points underneath each of them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second half of the discussion.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Bergen, you.
I prefer the table ways, the way it's set up now.
Okay.
I think, and, and the reason I, the reason I feel that is that. I think. Probably the members of the public needing a, a, an easier guide to things are gonna be looking at the carrying capacity. They'll need probably some guidance from, from staff to follow the stocking points explanation, and that's to the right. So I think the way it's set up now is just blends itself to easier interpretation for the public.
Okay, I'd say that, that's how I was thinking at first, I'm, all I'm looking at is carrying capacity, that's really what I think anybody would probably start with. And maybe need to go no further after.
Mr. Planner, why are rabbits, peacocks, and geese all shaded out?
What, you mean on the next one, on nine, three, five, two?
No, nine, three, five, one.
The shading, the shading is asking about.
I have no idea. Uh, they shouldn't be shaded. Okay.
Just asking.
No, it's a good point, only fur bears should be shaded. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion that Tom made about changing it, and it was seconded by me.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
No, you say they.
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 Okay, for they.
Okay, motion, motion fails, we can leave the table alone.
Gentlemen, if I may ask, Mr. Chairman, one thing, do you think I should get rid of all the SPs in there, it's really annoying me.
Yeah.
And just put points or something?
Yes.
They should just put points.
Yep, I agree.
Just a number.
Just a number? Number or twenty points?
Just a number.
Just a number.
Your predecessors all did the same.
Okay, trying to do the same, usually.
And what about per acre, as far as that goes?
I think per acre spells itself out.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta keep the per acre in there.
There's no heading saying per acre apple.
No, no, because.
Okay.
You're going on per acre, not splitting a half an acre. You're going as a.
One per two acres, too.
You're doing it, not playing your decimal point.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so it'll be just numbers then? Is that what you're saying?
With stocking points?
Yes, stocking points.
Get rid of the shading?
Yeah, the shading is gone, yeah, I guess I told you this program is correct. Nothing's where it's supposed to be.
I'm sure it's not user error.
It is user error, because I'm not used to it. Also, and also, they're trying to, they have, they have, they have apple.
Do you know what Peppcat stands for? Current, you know, Peppcat stands for? Problem exists between keyboard and chair.
Yep. And it's there. It's too complex.
Okay. Ceilings on the limits, the ceiling limits. You're right on that one. But why don't we, why don't we just say there are limits? Do, do we need?
Where are you, I'm confused.
I'm sorry, I'm under stocking points, right above table nine point three point five dash two.
Yeah, there's ceiling limits. I think, right, that's being, take ceiling on there.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Oh. How about max, how about maximum limits?
It, it just, there are limits, it's.
Okay. All right, limits on some, types of animals.
You know, there's, Chip, it gets paid like the old scribes, just to get paid by the number of letters they put down.
Okay, now, rabbits have been removed. Why have rabbits been removed from the table?
Because they're, because it's, it's well documented in the other one. We don't need to have any special consideration for rabbits. Rabbits don't cause a problem. There's no reason to limit them to twenty, ten per acre. They're all in the building, they're never on the outside.
But then why do we have cattle, horses, sheep, goats, red deer, alpacas, and yamas when they're the exact same per?
We could put rabbits in there, too. Put rabbits in there.
Rabbits are just to hop around, and they'll go where they wanna go, depends on if they're domesticated or wild.
We won't keep them very well if they're wild.
Ah?
They don't do well wild, they don't like to.
Okay, so, so we're gonna.
We're just gonna get rid of rabbits and put them up with yamas.
Well, here's, here's what's confusing, I think.
I know, Joe, go ahead.
Is. No, no, I, I take that back, I got it, okay, all right, so we're gonna add rabbits.
If we do that, I, I, it makes sense to me, but then down below, we have chickens, turkeys, geese. Could they all be combined?
No. They're in sizes.
But they're all ten per acre.
They're all ten, eight, turkey.
We could combine that if you wanted to.
I, I almost think that whole, the whole cattle, horses, et cetera thing, all that should be pulled out. Either that or just say C table nine point three point five dash one.
Well, you gotta identify what the livestock type. Anything but below.
Yeah.
I, I understand that, but you need to give.
How was it that the chicken in nine point, nine point three point five one? Turkeys have a, excuse me, chickens have a. Number of forty.
Yeah.
Or.
It's in the R one district. You guys voted that you wanted to have fewer chickens in the R one district because of its residential nature. And then everything else, in every other district, it goes back to this.
Okay.
Remember, these, you can almost call this the exception table.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, I see.
Can I actually?
I can have ten peacocks?
You guys.
Holy crap.
No, I was going like, what the hell? You live with.
I, 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 I was gonna say, I, I think that, that, the, the gunfire on the first day of hunting season. Going, going through my windows would be alarming.
Well, if you guys wanna knock it down, let's knock it down, I mean, I, I had prohibited it, you said, no, you can't do that. And you went up to four, and you said, well, we can have more in the R four district, and so I said, okay, well, ten is more.
My, my, my.
I said you deserve.
Honestly, my, my problem is, is putting peacocks together with guinea hens.
That's true.
Because, I mean, guinea hens make noise, but, good lord, there's nothing, I mean, peacocks are.
Well, that's why I tried to prohibit them, and you guys said you can't do that. Yes, I can.
I, I, I don't, I don't recall saying we couldn't prohibit peacocks, it was the guinea hens I didn't want to prohibit.
Well, you guys wanna prohibit guinea, and peacocks, because I would.
No, no, let's just make it, make it small, lower number, four.
Four, no, I.
Four is too much.
Why does, why don't we, how about we make it two, two, and, and?
Four?
Four.
Four for the R four district?
Now, if an animal is not listed in the listing, is it prohibited or not?
That's a very good point.
Because I'm thinking, how about ostriches? They got ostrich farms in Texas, you can go get ostrich burgers.
Yep, and Texas doesn't have thirty below weather. Ostriches don't do well, well, I mean, you could, then you're gonna have to put them inside of all, they can eat it.
Uh, the reason I'm saying, it's not there, is it permitted or omitted?
How would you wanna handle it, you wanna consider exotics? I would consider that an exotic. The planning board, they consider other.
Yeah, I think we don't wanna prohibit because it, who knows what we're not thinking of. But to allow the planning board to consider would be good.
I think it would be prudent for us to add a provision. Either above or below table nine point three point five dash one that, that says. Something for, for a species not covered herein. The planning board may consider an application or.
Maybe in the discretion of the planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Okay, can I have a motion that effective?
That's awful.
Yeah.
We already have.
I will make a motion to the effect that for any. Species not identified in table nine point three point five dash one. That the planning board may consider an application.
And, and determine.
And determine in its discretion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries, thank you, yes.
Can you read that?
Okay, Doug, do you have?
I was just checking the time so I can look at the video.
Okay, thank you, that'll work.
I have to have the.
Okay, can we get back, can we get back to guinea fowl and peacocks, do we, could, could. Would my fellow board members consider, I don't have any problem with prohibiting. Both in the R one, but could we have a. As, as I said, I mean, yes, guinea hens are much louder than chickens, but they. If I had a peacock, you could hear it because of the river, you could hear it all the way down Summer Street. Those things are, I mean, they're. They are horrifically noisy.
They go on zoos.
Yes, I, I agree. So, could, could we, could we first of all separate it and, and come up with numbers for guinea hens? And then discuss peacocks separately, is that agreeable, gentlemen?
Well, I think if we reduce the numbers from four to two in R two and three. And from ten to four in R four. For that grouping of guinea hens.
Yeah.
And peacocks, that should cover.
Well, my, 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 my issue is, in, in R four, somebody who has cows and wants guinea hens. To eat the ticks off the cows' bellies, which. That, that's why you get guinea hens.
Patent to annoy your neighbors. I don't know.
Are guinea hens ruining that?
I just had a problem with them on, on my place where they used to come over onto our property and sit in the, in the tree.
Ah, okay, so we, we have, we have personal problems with guinea hens.
Of course, yes, I have a, and I also like, and I really like them for fly time.
For what?
Fly time.
Yeah, they have great feathers.
They have great feathers for fly time. Which solves the problem.
I would think the peacocks would, too.
Yeah. It's bad luck.
Yeah, peacock grill is very expensive.
It's extremely expensive, and, and nobody does the fly, those flies are bad.
Okay.
I could do those for those.
Gentlemen, is your preference to leave these two alone together or separate?
We can do a separate one on peacocks and, and limit it to like two per property and four in the, in the.
I, I, I think two per property is fine, period.
Okay, so peacocks will do two per property in zones two, three, and four.
All.
All, all prohibited in one. And then guinea fowl will be.
Four, four, and, and what, six or ten?
Could we do, I, I, I would like to suggest ten, but.
Okay.
And I had R fours. I, I could live to regret that.
You could. We'll have to change it from, right now, there's no limit.
Okay, so Tom, is that immersion?
So, I'll make the motion, guinea hens will leave the same numbers. Prohibited in one. Max of four in two and three, and then ten in R four. But peacocks will be separate and is prohibited. Two, two, and.
Two.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay. Two, two, and two. Yeah, for peacocks, so four, four, and ten, two, two, and two.
All right. But be, before that gets seconded, if, if, in R two. What, is two too many? When there's two, does it get louder than if there were more?
Two nails will be a bad news.
I, I'll be, I, I. Peacocks are horrific.
Well, do we, do we want them at all in two, three?
That's a prison experience.
What's, what's the purpose of having them?
The purpose of having them.
Now, hold on there, yes.
Catch mice.
Cats do all kinds of good things, including catching mice.
Because if, I just wanna be sure, if we put it that is prohibited in R two or three. Are we gonna get complaints? Uh, cause if, um, I just wanna be sure, if we put it that it's prohibited in R two or three, are we gonna get complaints that it's unfair? Do we have peacocks in town or as is?
I think we have, I think we have some on, um, Limic Road.
Really?
What have, what have we made it one, one and two?
Tell me off, Ken.
Okay, I'll, I'll change it to that, one, one and two, cause, um. Get that correct, one, one and two for peacocks.
That's a motion?
That's a motion. Guinea fowl remains the number.
Four, four and ten.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion, gentlemen? Mr. Planner, are you happier with that?
I, I'm fine with it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Uh, for, for that limited issue?
Yes.
No.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Yams, you have something else?
Uh, only in seven, just to, uh, correct the date that we mentioned that.
Oh, jeez, come on, really?
Oh, yeah.
Two, alright.
I don't know, I, you know, I corrected it on the first version, okay?
This, what's, uh, it's a word presence in Gremlot.
There's plenty of time.
They happen.
I think it was asked last time, so we have, we're requiring them to, uh, register by August first. How will they know? So, yeah, we, we won't necessarily notify, we don't even know who they are.
Repopulation schedule? How the hell should I know? What are you talking about? Two, it's about the page four.
Before we go to that, what about my question, will, will they be, look, I just wanna, um.
Yeah, I, 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 I think it is a serious problem with figuring out how you're gonna notify people.
We, we're gonna be lenient on that, uh, like, kinda we have dealt with, with, um, contractor, yeah, to. Kinda gave them some extra time because they.
Make it twenty then instead of nineteen. How's that?
Two years.
Instead of nineteen, we make it twenty, and then how will I do it? Well.
How about in a, how about, uh, when the tax bills go out?
Tell everybody.
Tell everybody.
Tell everybody, that's a good idea.
That's a great idea, yeah.
It is a great idea.
Thank you.
Tell everybody. I like that.
What's the magic of August one, uh, curiosity?
Uh, just arbitrary, precious date, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I could do January first, August one sounds better because you get, you're out there in the summertime.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine. I, I, I actually greatly appreciate the, uh, the, a longer time. This is not, I, I do, I do, um. I, I have some stupid questions. What is a burrow pit?
Burrow pit is, uh, is basically, a burrow pit is a gravel pit that is used by the farm.
Okay.
It is not licensed by the state, and it's something that's kinda basically every farm has or can have.
There, there are a few things here that are just. Uh, assisting my mother, I, I'm not a farmer, but assisting my mother in her farming operation. Uh, yeah, I can give you an inventory of animals on the site, but the repopulation schedule?
Uh, how often do you, are you, how many, how many calves do you get a season?
Well, it all depends, I don't know. It depends on how many heifers have turned three and whether the bull's any good and how the hell do I know?
Well, wait, wait a second, isn't this, this, this pertains to?
Grandfathering.
Existing.
For, for commercial operations.
Right, so, isn't that somebody who would be reasonably charged with figuring that out?
It should be, well, I, you know, I. You can have five thousand dollars in revenue, and, and it's not a business, but.
Do you think, do you think that, that, um, term should be pulled out of there? Just, it's easy enough to inventory of all animals.
The fewer the number of, of animals on a site, the easier it is to make an estimate and less likely that the estimate's gonna be wrong.
Yeah.
The more animals there are, the more intensive a commercial operation is, and the more, a person who's running that should be expected to have an idea.
I think Bill Harrison won't be able to tell us exactly how many, how many calves he gets, or pretty much how many he gets on an average.
Alright, well, I'm not even gonna make my question about the average one, I just feed and sell it.
Yeah, and. Yeah, we don't need to have that, I mean, what, what do you guys need? I mean, think, think about what you really need to make, you're gonna be going over these criteria. What do you think you really need to know? I mean, where are, what are our problems? Our problem's gonna be basically, how do you take care of your manure? Do, do we have a problem with you keeping your, your, your food in a way that creates a worming problem for neighbors? You know, are you fenced properly, you know, um, especially if you have chickens running in the middle of the road?
I wonder, you were discussing that this morning.
I was watching it this morning. Well, you have chickens running in your room?
I mean, pasture, no, no, I, I. Pasture, pasture rotation schedule, you know, that, that, that again is, is, is just. I mean, it depends on how much rain you get in the spring.
Yep.
How quickly, you know, and what, how many sunny days you have, how quickly you can move from.
Yeah.
I mean, in some years, we're, we're bouncing the cows back and forth across the street every couple of weeks, cause the grass is so bad.
Yep.
So, the upshot of your concerns, Chip, is we don't, we don't need such exacting data. Maybe we should qualify some of these things by, for example, taking the example, taking your example of the repopulation schedule. Just something like estimated repopulation schedule, or, uh.
And, 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 and actually, as, as I've thought about that particular issue. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about my mom's cows in particular, but if somebody has five pigs. We wanna know damn well, yeah, what, what they're planning on doing with the piglets. Cause, you know, you, you got one boar and four sows this year, next year.
You're gonna value it.
Next year, you're gonna have one boar and, you know, twenty or thirty. Am I, okay, have I got the numbers wrong, Ted, or is that about right?
Oh, that's, uh, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so, I, so I, I withdraw my objection to the re, I, I think adding the word estimated.
That's good, I, I like that.
Is, is good, uh.
Do we need pasture rotation schedule? And it doesn't apply to all the species, chicken, sheep.
Yeah, you know, that really applies probably more if you're doing a lot of your livestock in open pasture. There, there's a big movement to do pasturing of all your livestock, put them together, and.
Yeah.
Whether or not that's happening in a run, I don't know, but I know that that's.
I honestly think most of the people that are gonna be going for grandfather status are gonna be, just like we are.
Same species.
And, 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 you know, it's a, it's a relatively small operation and frankly, we're feeding them hay. Eight months out of the year, supping on what's on the pastures, and you move them from pasture to pasture, just. It's, it's dependent on weather.
Yep.
So, if you scratch it down, it's.
Yeah.
Which one?
Oh.
Pasture rotation.
Pasture.
Pull that out, you can do that.
Either that or something like, uh. Schedule sounds very exact, as opposed to something you'd be used to a little, is there any other pasture other than the, the one, either two or the three?
Well, but that's all they're covering, certainly.
Is it? Okay, alright, scratch it.
We got a special.
Do we need, do we need to have a vote on that?
No.
And we're adding the word estimated.
Yep.
Yep. Do we put the fee here or do we, you got us to, um, like, do we dislike them for other?
Take the fee out, that's a very good point, Tom, let's not start this again.
A non-refundable registration fee as determined by the Board of Selectment.
Okay.
It's not enthusiastic.
B O S.
B O S, the boss.
Can you repeat that?
A non-refundable registration fee as determined by the Board of Selectment. I, I'm sorry, di- didn't we say something about a schedule, Ted, before? As, as, as specified in a schedule, or what was?
Yeah, I think what you said right there was good enough, Chip.
Okay, right, I just, you know, if, if you say determined by the Board of Selectment, that means I can call Tom and say, Tom, dude, I shouldn't have to pay more than five bucks.
And if, and then it's on his back, and I say, hey, Tom, guess what, costs us a hundred and fifty bucks to advertise this, great, we'll just have a hundred and forty-five dollar loss in our column.
At least you be, let's, let's be consistent.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, registration process. Two hundred feet.
Is that enough?
No, I think it should be seventy-five feet, but I, I have a conflict.
Yes, you do, that's true.
Depending if they have peacocks or not, then it's a half a mile.
Oh, this is what I was speaking of earlier, but if they have a nutrient management program, okay? They're gonna kinda determine where the pad is gonna be or whatever else, Tom.
Yeah, that, that part would fulfill all that we're looking for.
I mean, and, I mean, that's why.
What are you talking about?
Uh, the footage, if it's gonna be two hundred feet from the road or whatever else, not because, well, we had, when you were talking about Panet. And about how he had, uh, for them to come and pick up or anything else. And he, he asked you if we had to come to the planning board or if it was gonna be staff review. He's not that worried to sell him, if he knew where it was and two hundred feet from the road.
Um, I thought we were talking about who we're gonna notify. I think you're having, this is a notification, this is all butters within two hundred feet.
Well, I mean, I was.
We're up, we're up at registration.
No, I, I, I.
Oh, not the.
I, I don't think we got stuck on that, Ted, I think.
Okay, we're past that, so we're down to four states, okay.
Second sentence, all property. Two hundred feet.
There's only two hundred feet, it's just basically standard acreage of a, of one acre, two hundred by two hundred, this.
Do you think it's too little?
Well, I don't think, I, I think it's. I think it's a hardship in the, her.
Yeah, particularly if you're on a cul-de-sac.
Three, like, that could be kinda.
If you're on a cul-de-sac, which generally when you don't have two hundred foot frontage.
What, what's, what is the, I, I can understand having a restriction. Let me put it a different way. Is it possible that, that a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet from a dwelling is appropriate? But maybe a different number as a distance from a road? You think, okay, I, I'm just, just throwing that thing.
The only reason I was for that was just because sometime, it's uncovered mid-horn, sometimes on a hot summer day, you know, yeah.
Okay, we, now, this should, this should, we, we said all, the, the words shall be covered and.
Yeah, it's, that's an error.
Deleted.
Yeah, that's deleted, and I, it's already deleted on my copy, I'm sorry.
Where are you going now?
Yeah, it's gone.
Why, why do we go from a hundred and fifty to two hundred foot? Cause somebody wanted it?
Oh, wait, are we, are we resolved on, on the registration process?
Yeah, we're down below.
Yeah, we're, we're in the performance standards. Yeah, I thought we did. I thought we went over this.
Okay, then, then, then let's party on.
We did go over it, I have enough to do with it.
This is the product of our going over, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and E. Second sentence, should that read all new applications? Or all applications for new animal husbandry operations?
No, cause it, it does have the, 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 um, condition of which are required in state law to maintain prevalent, so if they're already required.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misread it, I apologize, okay, thanks, Tom.
Preposition, conjunction, conjunction.
You'd have or proceedings surrounding. What, well, I'm sorry, why can't the grazing area go around a body of water? You have, so you have a small, you have a fire pond. In the middle of the pasture and. The cows go around the fire pond, but you may hang all of it.
Yeah, we brought that up, didn't we correct that?
I thought we fixed it.
You did, huh? Did I miss that?
What would it say? Just what in or a water course?
Or in, I think it was in a body of water.
For open or anything?
Did you have? You have it.
Well, I, I think I, I think, I remember asking, is it, is it inappropriate for a, a small sort of pasture pond to have the, the livestock be able to access it?
Grazing and drinking.
It, 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 it actually, it's, it's a really bad practice.
It is.
You, you don't wanna do it, yeah, cause.
Bathing the animals.
Yeah, cows, cows, I mean, they crap whether they eat them, certainly, forgive me, sorry.
No, they do, they're.
Yes, they, they do.
They're free will. So, um, I, I, ideally, you want to have their water in a trough or, not, not even ideally.
Alright, so we just need a pre, a conjunction.
This is or a body of water.
Yeah.
Yeah, or open body of water, I think that's what you've done, I think that's what we said before.
Or open body of water.
The previous changes on the.
Okay.
Versus a closed.
Okay.
Rodent proof containers, no such thing.
I know there is, that's existing, I didn't write it, that's existing.
That's a bad joke. How about rodent resistant containers?
Another euphemism.
Whatever, okay.
Do you want me to put resistant in there?
No, no.
Everybody who knows is running to rat noses, that's impossible. They choose through steel. They don't choose through copper. I have to write this up tomorrow because I have to make it available, assuming that we proceed with the next version.
Here, what, what about, what about this one, Ted? It's, here you go, guys. Here you go, guys.
I actually missed goat.
It's goats. Yeah, and they, and their pet, and the pet. He's had, he's had down in the feed bin.
Yeah. I'm surprised there's not a refrigerator.
That, that is not a goat-proof feed bin.
No.
Right, it's just not a rodent-proof, but it's in Kenny Busport, so we don't need to worry about it.
So, we think the rest of those goats.
Okay, alright. Gentlemen, what do you, what do you, how do you feel about where we are on this and can we?
Well, I'll make a motion that we forward this to the Board of Selectmen. The, I'm meeting block here.
As amended.
As amended, yeah, thanks.
I'll second that, Chip.
Should, should, okay, question, should the motion include, um, setting a public hearing date?
Oh. That has to be before.
Does it need, does that need to be separate? Well, the, the question is, we have on our agenda for this evening, setting a public hearing date.
Okay, so should we do that first, before?
No, no, I, 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 I guess I'm asking, do we have to have two motions, or could we have, Mr. Plainer, can we have one motion?
Sure. You can do, yeah, you can have a motion doing both, that you approve this as amended and set a public hearing date for May twenty-fourth.
Okay, well, no, no, I, I, I'm suggesting we, just, that, that, never mind, forget it, forget it. We'll hit that when we do item two.
Right.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? First, I, I just for the record, I wish that we had more input from people like my mom, Al, as opposed to USDA employees and relatively large commercial operations. But without that, we, we may very well hear from them at town meeting.
Or public hearing.
Or the public hearing, and I just think the board should be aware of that.
We, we don't have time to revise if we had some, heard something at public hearing, there's no time.
Yeah, I, I, I'm simply stating the obvious.
Yeah, I agree, it's always good to get more.
I, I would, I would very much have liked more input from.
Did what we could. I'm sure we got something wrong, huh?
You can count on that.
Were we all in favor of that?
Alright, all, all those in favor of approving this as we have amended it this evening and shooting it on to the Board of Selectmen with a request it be voted on in town meeting, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Question.
Yes.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Um, we have to do that after the public hearing, send it on to the, to the.
Absoluted, okay.
It's just.
My, my back for ignore my language and use Thomas. Do we need to do a new vote, gentlemen, or is the vote acceptable? Vote's acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, okay, wonderful.
That's, congratulations, Plainer, that was a heck of a speech, it was a very agonizing thing to go through.
Well, thanks for the, thanks for the organization of those versions.
Yeah.
Okay, item two, set public hearing date for proposed land use amendments. The first one is repeal and replacement of land use ordinance five point nine landscaping and buffering. This is the exact same language which we rejected at the last special town meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and we are presenting it, we, we are having a public hearing on it again because.
We have to.
We, you know, because we still think it is appropriate language and believe that the vote against it at the previous town meeting did not reflect the language.
I, I think it's not exactly, we did make some slight changes, I believe, because I remember saying, I remember hearing us saying, at least we changed it, it's not the same. I forget what we changed in it, we did change something.
You're right, Tom. Oh, Tom, okay, point taken, I withdraw my comment. Okay, so do we need to vote on these separately, Mr. Plainer, can we?
You can do them as a group, you wish.
Okay, so we, we, then we have a revisions to road crown specifications, this is simply to, an attempt to make things consistent. Animal husbandry, we just beat to death. Small commercial stable of less than ten, uh, this is the. Equestrian, yeah, the, the hobby farm, it's not really a hobby farm. Then we have the technical and financial, it should, this should read capacity, Ted, to be nitpicky. Isn't that what we said?
Financial.
Isn't that the language?
Yeah.
That was.
Okay, this should be capacity.
So, read, set that, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the last one was by, that was by, I know, just, I think, have a seventy notification period that will allow us to have a quicker turnaround time for applicants.
Absolutely.
Okay, any, can I have a motion, please?
Uh, what, what date does it have to be?
Twenty-fourth.
So I make a motion, we set a public hearing for the proposed land use amendments for May twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing, no discussion, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Public carries.
Could be nothing else on the agenda that night, will that, Ted?
That is correct.
Right.
Because right now I have, I will tell you honestly, I have had no applications.
Wow, okay, other, other, other business, does anyone else have other business?
I have a question on Route One, is this site goes straight out across from the Marina?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get a lot of that.
This is like a nice, this is the second conversation he's had today about it.
Okay, so do we?
He has a permit to do forty percent basal area cutting.
More like ninety-nine percent.
He was warned of that, so Monday morning, Mr. Nagel will be notified that we may have a potential violation there, and I was warned. I had also warned him that you will have landscape responsibility, buffering responsibilities, that you cut everything down, Plainer may make you put it all back, and apparently that fell on deaf ears, I have witnesses that I told him. There is a business going there, and ironically, it's a landscaping business.
Then they should be able to.
They should get good prices on the trees.
Reasonably priced, yes.
They can get a tree spade and put those eight-inch trees back.
Okay. Any else, Mr. Plainer?
I have, um, did I report to you about Bandaloo?
Yes. About what?
Bandaloo, the restaurant?
Email, yeah.
I got it, okay.
They closed today.
Why?
The Capeport one?
Yeah, they're, they're moving to Rumble.
The old fireplace that was.
Yankee fireplace.
Yay!
Bandaloo is?
Yeah.
Sorry. They're gonna, I didn't know if they're gonna have two sites they're closing where they have been.
They will be there during the season.
Yeah.
And their, their lease is up in December and they will be moving to Rumble.
Okay, that's wonderful.
That is.
Yep, we had to have another special meeting because of some issues on entries and the staff review committee had an emergency meeting and took care of it, and they were able to close.
Wish them luck.
Yeah. Yep.
Are they buying, they're buying the building?
They're buying the building, they have to retrofit the building, have to spend a tremendous amount of money on, have to bore basically a six-inch water line across the street in order to deal with the fire protection and fire suppression systems. That the fire models require them to do.
When are they expected to close?
Uh, they're, they're expected, they're, they're expected to open in December at the new location.
I mean, close on the purchase.
They've closed, they closed today.
Oh, they closed today, no kidding.
Okay, I had some, some questions and comments about our meeting on Monday. The first question I have, has to do with the jurisdiction, may not be the right, right term, phrase, but the land use ordinance is clearly under the purview of the planning board.
Correct.
The subdivision ordinance is clearly under the purview of the planning board.
Correct.
The standalone street and road ordinance. Who's is that?
I believe that it's still under the planning board except for standards that specify town roads or town acceptance procedures.
And, and who's? Who is in charge of that?
In terms of town, acceptance of town roads, that is the Board of Selectmen and the, and the town meeting, it is the legislative body, which is the town meeting.
Okay.
They are the ones responsible for accepting town roads.
My, I, I, I am, I was mystified by several things that came up at the meeting on Monday. One was the suggestion that a new independent board be created to deal with private ways. Another that I didn't understand at all was why there, why subdivisions have to have should have, what, if, if the rules and regulations that apply to subdivisions have to be kept in the subdivision ordinance because that has nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen, then why aren't all the other road and private way provisions, why shouldn't those be in the land use ordinance?
They should be, and that's why private ways is in the land use ordinance. Because that is actually a land use issue, remember, those private ways are providing legal frontage for a lot, which is a land use issue.
Also providing, also providing access to a lot.
That's right.
For example, the, I forget the young man, the address, but that discussion about the twenty-five-foot road.
Why shouldn't?
And so, I, I just, for the record, I, I withdraw my suggestion that things be removed from the land use ordinance, and I think that what we need to do is make sure that the land use ordinance provisions and the subdivision ordinance provisions are consistent and make sense, and I further suggest that the standalone street and road ordinance address solely those rules and regulations which fall under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. So that that's their, that, that their ordinance and everything else is our ordinances. And so, I wanted to say that for the record.
Also, Mr. Chip, some of this, along the way, there had been discussions prior to other town managers of having roads done and then refusing to allow them to do a board test or anything else, it was a good old boy situation at different times.
So that's why. And, and there was a time when coffee at the Arundel Muffin prior to the town meetings is when everything was decided.
Yes.
That's when we.
You're too young to remember the Arundel Muffin.
That's also when we also used to have a town meeting and everything else upstairs to the town hall.
Okay, does anyone else have any other business?
Mr. Chairman, the fine line?
Mm-hmm.
In reference to that, I think.
What?
In reference to what you were speaking.
The road and street companies.
I'm speaking of that, and I don't mean to resurrect it, but I think that it's going to require a planning board, more planning board participation in the process. And I know that we don't, that we have a lot of things to do, but I think this is important, um, for the planning board to put in their two cents on this and, and, and take the lead. So we're getting nudged out of our original plans, but I think that it's something that could be beneficial for the town.
Well, and it, 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 it became. Keep that thought to myself.
I just, I encouraging more planning board members to participate.
Please, I, I, I would, I would plead with you to at least come, is it two weeks from today?
Two weeks. Actually, it'll be a week from this coming.
A week from this coming Monday, if, if, if we could have more planning board members there, it would be great. It, it was a combination of a couple of selectmen, and then a couple of contractors and a couple of people with very specific personal desires.
I thought that the whole point of that, this subcommittee was just to flesh out some concepts or guidelines for us to.
To, Tom, to. That, that, that's, that is what I, that was my misconception as well.
So, are you saying that they are trying to define a whole new committee or process?
Well, when, 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 who, going, going into the meet, before the meeting, I was thinking what you just said, that, that we were trying to, to have a common set of rules, I, I thought it made sense to have a standalone ordinance which covered everything, whether it's subdivisions or driveways or, or, or streets that, that would be town streets and roads. If, in the course of the meeting, I came to the conclusion that the purpose was to make special accommodations surprise for select individuals again. And, and the, the idea of trying to, to rationalize the, the three different places where there are rules and regulations about streets and roads that, that was not the objective at all. They, they want, they want to have an exception for family subdivisions, which is.
Which is created, it's created a lot of issues of.
Well, the, 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 how in the world do you define it, and can I go adopt a few crackheads and, I'm sorry. Inappropriate, unprofessional, but could, could I adopt a couple of people for purposes of creating a family subdivision and then un-adopt them as soon as the family subdivision was done, but the, there's special rules for families, I, it, it, it just it, it's, it is the Board of Selectmen once again wanting to have special rules for certain people.
Can it, those, and I, I get the ones who are kind of.
Can it, those, uh, and, and I, I get the ones who are kind of stuck, uh, and I wish, um, someone could, could actually put in the road that, that, that they were hoping to. Is there any way they can go to the Board of Appeals? Is, is that an option?
No, Board of Appeals, so, and the reason I say that is, you know, the Board of Appeals sounds like that would be a great idea, but they have a very limited, you know, window of purview and very narrow, uh, set of circumstances they can, can consider. A, a variance, for instance, is a very rigid and usually only deals with, with dimensional standards.
Which isn't this.
This is not a dimensional standard. Dimensional standard would be setbacks. It would be coverage. You remember with the school, we had a ZBA on the coverage because the school exceeded the, the, the lot coverage for this lot.
Yeah.
And so they got a variance on that. And as we discussed, that, there was not a basis for that. And if we had challenge, we would probably not prevail, but there was no challenge because it was a, it's a public benefit. So, um, yeah, the, the ZBA does not really provide that kind of relief.
Right.
Yeah.
Couple. So this is, so this is a, this is a, a planning board, uh, an area that's most properly within the planning boards, Ballywick. If there are more discussions, if we had more workshops or what have you, my hope is that this would be done on the customary and usual planning board time as opposed to making a meeting on the selectman time.
I agree, yeah.
And, and I, part of that's selfish because my, my, every Monday I'm already an existing commitment. So I, that's why I wasn't.
No, that, 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 that is, I, I have, um, I had spoken with one of the selectmen last fall, and I heard that there, there was a desire to address these issues. And, uh, I, I spoke with him and probably for forty-five minutes and thought we were going to have a small group of four or five people to try to come up with a list of what, what are the issues, what are the priorities, what, what do people have problems with? I, I personally, I have problems with sidewalks. It's ridiculous to require sidewalks at Arundel. But that's just my personal opinion. But, uh, that, that's, the selectmen in question didn't follow up on that at all. Just writing a couple of requests, um, through the town manager. And then all of a sudden, we get, because of one specific, uh, property owner's desires, we get the demand for a, a joint meeting of the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. And, and again, I spoke with the same, uh, spoke with Mr. Danilic, um, ahead of time and, and thought what we were trying to do was get rid of inconsistencies and rationalize the, the street and road construction standards. And, uh, it, it. Mr. Planner, you correct me if I'm wrong, it became very apparent during that meeting that that wasn't the objective at all.
Well, and I think I had mentioned to Mr. Danilic that I had questions as to the flow of authority on the statutory mandate comes from, if it goes to the planning board or not to the selectmen.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I'm almost wondering if, um.
I have a question.
I, I still haven't got my turn yet.
I'm sorry, Marty, go ahead. I apologize. My next.
Question, way of, along private ways, driveways or anything else. For, we mandate if somebody in building a house, they have a driveway, okay? Now, if their driveway is longer than fifty, a hundred feet, is that considered a bri, uh, private way? Or a driveway? So that it will meet now the quote-unquote safety standards of a fire truck or a ambulance or loading vehicles.
It, it's, it's strictly on the number of residences.
Well, when I'm, when I'm using it for an example, when I come in at, is, is a, if you got a private way going into a lot, which is in the back, okay? Four hundred feet deep. It only has to be twenty-five feet wide or whatever the minimum is. I mean, his own private driveway.
Yeah.
But it still has to turn around and.
No, what the standard says.
Marty, it's a driveway.
It's a driveway and.
Not a private way.
But what we do have a standard in the Ozony horns, which is not enforced, is that if, for, a driveway is twelve feet wide, which is adequate for a fire truck to get in and service trucks. I mean, remember, we have moving vans, uh, you know.
All trucks.
All that stuff. And the issue is that, uh, when it gets over four hundred feet, they're supposed to have basically bump outs or drive, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Areas in which you drive off so that two vehicles approaching each other, one can pass the other.
This is in a driveway.
Yeah.
That's why I'm throwing out some of those questions. Could we, we've been through that before.
It hasn't been.
One, one, one of the complaints that came up, which I think is pertinent, is there's one standard if a driveway is serving a single house, there's, there's this, another set of standards if it's serving two houses. There's a third standard if it's serving three houses. No. Then, then there's four to seven, and then there's eight and above, and.
It's, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
You know, you, if you only have a, a right of way that serves one, one lot, and it's a right of way that you use for access, and it's a driveway that's twelve feet wide. If you do two lots, then you're right, it's that, it's fifteen feet wide. If you do three or more, it's eighteen feet wide. If you get over, over, uh, eight feet, then you go, uh, eight units, then you go to twenty feet wide.
Okay, is three, three to seven is, okay. But there is, there were complaints about that, and, and, and I think that's something that the planning board could, could and should consider. But I, I, I have to agree with Yen that, uh, I, I, I think that, um, I have a problem with the, 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 the process and, and in particular, I have a problem with the idea of one of the selectmen, um, drafting, uh, proposed ordinance language for, that, that's. That, that, that's planning board.
Well, could, could.
Purview.
Chair, can I ask, uh, are they, are they, are they gonna, uh, be, go through all the detailed language? Just like we just went through for, for things that aren't as important to the town, that, that's just the animal husbandry. They, they gonna, are they gonna spell out all that?
My, my impression was that Tom Danilic, if, he's, he's going to be in charge of marking up the ordinance.
All the ordinances or just road orders? What's the rule?
Anything can.
There's no good question. Why, why would they stop there? What about something else they want to change?
Well, Tom, that's a very good question, and, and, and the answer is, yeah, if, if the Board of Selectmen can take that over, then, you know, then. I, I, I don't, I haven't read the statute. Hold on, can we, one, please?
Sorry, sorry.
I, I, I haven't read the statute, so, uh, I, I guess we need to look at the, uh, who has the statutory authority to, to govern these things? And I, I, I don't know what, what the situation is between the Board of Selectmen and the planning board. But I, I think it's a horrible precedent to have a selectman drafting ordinances which ultimately would require approval by the planning board.
Also, how about standards like for guidelines for a road to be built equalling to what I'm gonna call from different town base levels, so you have a good foundation and whatever else, not that it's, so you don't have your soft shoulders or whatever else, not, isn't there something along, I hate to use it, the idea of state guidelines besides the east side of the west, uh, term, like in the, uh, different parts of the town, I mean, uh.
The state doesn't have guidelines for municipal roads per se. The, the guidelines are really based on engineering practices. That's where they really have come. State has its own stand and they're based on engineering practices. Radiis are based on spu, uh, speed and coefficients of friction are based on the kind of material doing this. Road engineering is a very long, uh, and, and very well documented science that dates all the way back to the Appian Way and the, and the Romans. So there's a lot of documentation. Now, there are different, the amount of gravel in different situations varies. Really should be based on soil conditions, but we have just general standards. For instance, we have eighteen inches of gravel, uh, for, for a road, one of them is twenty-four.
Mark, Mark Welch says fifteen is fine.
If Mark says there's fifteen is fine, and, um.
Again, on your soil conditions.
It, it really does ba, it's really should be based on soil.
Well, and, and I, I, and a, a perfect example of that is.
Down the street.
My, my house was the, the first house that Span builders ever did in Arundel. They were not familiar with Arundel clay. And they scooped out where the driveway was going and they put down the geofabric or whatever you call that, that stuff, and they put more than the required amount of gravel and whatever else was down there. And two months, two months later, they had to come back and bring in significantly more, uh, material because just with the construction trucks going in and out, the thing had sunk two or three inches.
And the other thing is, I can't, when he had a crystal ball.
And, and you know Span builders not cut corners when they're doing anything.
No, they don't. But I'm just saying that's, the other thing is somewhere along the way, uh, a private way or one road or future lots, you develop it to one standard now, let's say, two or three houses. But somewhere down along the way, the, the property is sold and somebody else does something else. And everybody always, everybody used to always laugh at me when I used to say, well, look in your crystal ball. So how are we gonna turn on and play the roads and the crystal ball for the future?
Well, and, and the crystal, let me, let me turn to this, this special rules for family subdivisions concept. How do you define family? How long is it gonna be in the family? Is, you know, if, if you, if you have, you know, you make one lot for Johnny, one for Bobby and one for Sally, who's to say that Bobby's wife isn't gonna find out he's doing something that causes her to divorce him? She gets the property and she sells it to, you know, to whoever, and suddenly, you know, it, it's not a, it's not a family subdivision. And, and that, that's ignoring the gaping potential for abuse.
Yeah.
Of, the, I, I just, the.
Also too, Chip, the other thing that we run into is turn out a family has a lot and they have a common driveway, but also they have it for, they can't split it off for the bank purposes.
That, that actually was discussed at, at some length.
I'm just throwing that out as an other thought.
There's some, some situation where the, the, well, what, what's being done for the Olympic Conservation Trust on the town hall property where there are road frontage and there are required access, it is not how they're gonna get into the property. They're gonna be getting into the property on the, the, the town's roadway. And I'm, I'm sure this wasn't the intent of the meeting on Monday, but it, it occurred to me that, that, that the, we should at some point discuss if, whether or not there should be a requirement that the right of way is the actual travel way.
I believe the board has, has, has been discouraged that it's, that the, the estate lot or the bisque flag lot has been misused to get people out of, out of trouble. The most, most, and the biggest client of that has been the town of Arundel.
Yeah.
Here and down there. So, um, yeah, it's not meant to be an escape clause. The access strip on a flag lot is meant to be the dr, where you can put your driveway.
So, so.
If you wanna have a common, terrific.
And, 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 you know, it.
That's where you're.
If, if the access strip has a, a stream, yeah, there's a stream crossing and some vernal pools and, and whatever, that, it, it does beg the question of, it, I, I brought up the subject of title insurance and, you know, can, can, again, title insurance, if your actual egress, it, it, it can't be on the legal right of way and it has to in fact go through somebody else's property. So, um, I, I, I think we've got some real problems. I, I, I would encourage as many people as possible to attend a week from Monday. Or, or, or we.
Good, sir, that's.
Apply to partici, I, I, I mean, that.
Not sure we wanted to decline. I think we could say we would ask, how about if we shift to, uh, to a Thursday venue? Uh, that would more planning board members can attend. It won't conflict with the selectmen's, the selectmen meet on Mondays. Or, or do it on Wednesday or do it.
Off to the selectman meet.
I, I don't want.
Maybe that, on the same schedule we do.
I, I don't, I, I don't wanna, I, I, quite frankly, I, I think, I, I, I have rethought my position. And this is not, that meeting on Monday was not what I had, had hoped for in any way, shape or form. And I, I think that if, if the Board of Selectmen wants to urge the planning board to review the provisions for driveways, private ways, subdivision roads and, and whatever else, that we can do that at planning board meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I won't be making the Monday meet. I haven't, I haven't committed Mondays as well.
Mondays are all.
Well, I, okay, that, I, I was unaware of that when, when we agreed to this in our first place. Are, are we meeting again before the twenty-fourth?
No.
Okay, gentlemen, Jamie and I were the only two that were there. Now, now I know why. I'm not criticizing you guys at all. But, um, I, I would like some guidance from the other board members as to how you want, I, and I, I do think we need to re, we, we need to thoroughly research the statutory authority question, Ted. I, I, I want to be able to cite chapter and verse. But it, it, if it turns out that it is up to the planning board under main state law, then I, I think that.
We're the dog, not the tail.
Yeah. And, and, and I, I don't, I don't, I, I'm very uncomfortable with the way that meeting went on Monday.
Can you, Tank, can you check with regional planner and see like, uh, where the different authorities go?
No, we, we just need to go on the web and look at the, the main state law.
I'll also, I'll confirm with several, several authorities as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Yen, can, can we bounce off you two?
Sure.
Okay. All right, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Uh, before we make that, I think turn out also, uh, uh, other people in town should be, if they got voting coming up or anything else. if they got voting coming up or anything else for the town arrow or something else should be put in to let people know that there is possibly going on instead of just quiet hush-hush and nobody else knows that this discussion may be going on.
About the roads or just about the zoning stuff?
Both.
I don't know if the arrow is being published again.
I'm just, I'm just using that as, because the fact is if you put it, not everybody's on computers.
Agreed.
Okay, and you put it on the town website, I suggested when they're gonna be building this Taj Mahal down the road, I turn it on to at least let people know what's going on, to put it on public TV. And I was told point blank, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, it is. I just put, I'm, I'm gonna load it tomorrow. Oh, yes, everybody's gonna sign that. Thank you. I keep forgetting these things. Marty, it will be loaded. You will see the chaos that was last, last Tuesday.
And my jaw locking. Okay.
Yeah, that one. You will, it will be posted and we actually didn't have a very good meeting on Tuesday. And somehow I managed to volunteer to be on one of the committees. The site design committee, weighing out of parking lots, drainage, stuff like that. We will be getting an engineer and we will be getting an architect, but right now we're, we have a, a crew of actually very talented people and they're going to take a whack at it to try to keep the architects and the, and the LAIs and the engineers from, from going off on a wild tear. So that will, I will post that. You can watch that if you want to. Good luck. Because it was, it was, everybody's talking at once. There were two big tables and everybody's talking at once on these two tables and it should be very entertaining.
Yeah, there was no one clear discussion.
There was no one clear discussion. You were on, I, I went between tables. You were, you were working with John over here and I was working with Steve over here.
I thought it was good.
Yeah, a lot of good ideas.
A lot of good ideas.
Everybody throwing good ideas out.
Were you signing the findings effect for the one?
Yes. Okay. Did you have a, what, am I supposed to turn this off? Every second a motion?
Yes, second.
Was there a second?
You've been busy tonight.
Yeah, I always second that one.
Here is your finding effect. There's your pen.